Like to welcome everyone to the London City Council meeting. Please stand, join me in the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent reflection.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we're just stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Take our.
Are you on recording?
Yes. It is recording.
Yeah, I gotta make sure.
All right. For our roll call, Mr. Eads.
Here.
All right, Mr. Peters.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Mr. Hitt.
Here.
And Mr. Stahl.
Present.
Good to see everyone this evening. And have you had a chance to take a look at the minutes from our last meeting? Corrections, changes? All in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
We do not have any public hearings this evening. We do not have any communications or announcements. Onto our audience concerns. First, we have Michael Norman. Please state your name, address, and you have five minutes, please. Thank you.
Michael W. Norman, 188 South Oak Street, here in the great city of London, Ohio. So I have a question before I start. Are we going to be allowed to ask questions when the ordinance comes up, or more specific? Or do I need to do that now?
You can do that when the ordinance comes up.
Okay, because, yeah, I was gonna say that might be more than five minutes. So, that being said, I don't have as much. I do have a question. Is it true that we have not, or the BPU has not allowed Aqua the opportunity to look at our books, walk through our, walk through our plant and such, like the council implied that they were going to be able to do? Have we decided not to do that?
Okay, as far as that, I am not sure, because our representative for that was Anthony Smith, who's no longer on our board. Our new representative is Mr. Hayes. Mr. Hayes, do you have any updated information on Aqua?
I would have to defer to Mr. Castle, because I have, or... Back here, okay. Les?
Would it be TJ or us? Fortunately, we do have BPU representatives here, so...
Great. Do you want to move out of your way?
Or is that, is that a, is that a process that's still under review and continuation, or where are we at with any of the investigation into Aqua?
Counsel, Mr. President.
Yes.
The BPU reviewed their initial proposal, and we did some research with the other counties that they are assisting, and we thought that at this point in time that we could do a better job for the citizens of London without furthering our conversations with Aqua. We know that they, they operate around the state and around the Midwest, as a matter of fact, but there are also a lot of other regionalization companies that operate much more efficiently.
Okay.
And so, at this present time, we have our hands full with what we're doing, without turning, you know, all of our attention to have the representatives from Aqua go through the plant and go through city administration, et cetera, based on our initial research.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I believe. So my question then is, it was implied by this council, because you all were up there and the citizen had asked, you all seemed to agree that this would happen. So basically, they, yours, what he just said is that we're not going to allow them to come through, or we're not gonna allow them to see our books. So that brings me to this question of, you're sitting here tonight, and we're gonna talk about making an eighteen million dollar loan, when the whole purpose of bringing Aqua in to begin with was, we were looking for different ways to where we wouldn't have to do that loan? So if the BPU has decided on their initial brief information that they've gotten so far from Aqua, to not allow them to come through and actually give hard numbers, then how can we sit here today and make this eighteen million dollar decision without having all the facts? I mean, one of you sat there last meeting and said that you're a hundred percent behind this, and you're for it, and you're all go, but you haven't been given all the information. Aqua could come in here, they could give an offer, yeah, it could be crap, but we don't know that now. You don't know that, I don't know that. We're basing it on the BPU, who has a personal interest that, you know, they're to look out for themselves. And I've said this before, they should not be the ones who are looking at this information. They, if they want to collect it, and they want to send it to you, you are the overview for our BPU, am I, am I not right about that? Don't you oversee the BPU in a way? You don't let them spend more than they're supposed to spend. You have to approve this eighteen million dollars, so you are the approval for them to do things, but it looks like you guys are kinda like, oh, we're not gonna touch this, we're backing off. And you're letting them be the bad guys, and say, oh, no, we're, we don't think that's good, we looked into this, we looked into that. Well, first of all, is that, is that public information that I can get, or you can get? Because obviously, you haven't seen it, right? Have any of you seen anything from Aqua?
We received some information from Anthony Smith when he was here, and from Mr. Le Lonic's statement that he just made, it sounds like they have done their research in that. And if he thinks that what they've currently proposed to us, we could provide a better service, I think that BPU is not looking out for themselves, I think that BPU is looking out for the city of London. If they can present, if they can do this better than Aqua, and then also too, there may be other companies out there that are better than Aqua. So it sounds to me like they are not the only company out there that can provide the service that they're trying to provide. And BPU, if you just heard him say that we could provide it better than they could.
Well...
So if we could provide it better than they could, why would we continue to look at them as a source to outsource our water, if we could do better than what they have already proposed us? And if we let them come through our facilities, and they would give us better numbers, why wouldn't they give us those better numbers from the beginning?
Because they have...
That would be my question.
Well, I'm gonna answer it for you. If they don't know what our numbers are, and they haven't been in our facilities, how can they give you a legitimate number? How can they give you a legitimate offer, if you don't allow them to come in and look and see what we have?
So you would say the numbers they gave us are...
It's like, if you went and bought a house, if you went and bought a house, and I only let you see the outside of it, and said, there it is, and you made an, I mean, that doesn't make any sense. You're, you're, you're trying to say, well, why wouldn't they make a better offer? Well, why would they make an offer when they don't know what they're coming into? You're not allowing them to see the whole picture. So how can they make a good offer, a legitimate offer? You know, and like, and I go back again, you can say the BPU is doing what's right for the city, and I would hope that they are, but you can't, you know, it's, they're basically self policing. I, I mean, if, if I'm going to sell, you know, if I have the threat of losing my job, or my friends are gonna lose their job, if we go through with this, you know, with this acquisition, that could, that could taint your thoughts, that could taint how you look at things.
All right, and I would, I hear what you're saying, but I know that BPU has the absolute best interests of the city at heart, because that's what they do. They're the BPU for the city of London. They're not the BPU for themselves, or the BPU for someone else, they're the BPU for, they're sworn, just like we are here, to put our best foot forward for the city of London. Aqua, they have no investment at all, except for looking at the dollars they could make from our community, if they come into our community. BPU, one hundred percent of the dollars that would be generated through there, all goes back to the city of London. It's generated by the community, and it goes back to the community, one hundred percent of that. So I believe in the BPU, and I am one hundred percent behind the legislation that they're bringing, that's why I sponsored it. So thank you for your comments. All right.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Can I address part of that?
Okay.
So the, we had a meeting where it was discussed that the Board of Public Utilities had turned that over to the law director. Do we know what the law director decided, whether or not they were gonna allow Aqua to come in and look? That's the first part, and the second part was, from the presentation that I remember that they gave, they just asked to tour the facilities and be able to look at books, I guess, in order to give that letter of interest and give a proposal. I don't know if we could have possibly had that until those things have happened. So I kind of thought it was all back to the law director, last I heard.
That's the last that I heard of it.
That's the last you heard of it also?
Rex, have you heard anything from, or BPU, have you heard anything? There we go.
I'm not sure what Councilman Eads is referencing. I do remember the questions as to whether we could take, if they bought our facilities, what the city could do with those funds. I know it's always been thought that it could only stay in, you know, they're separate funds, enterprises are not. She did research and found out that if we sold our assets completely off the books, the net that's left over, we'd have to take care of all the loans that we have on the books, and the net that's left over, then the city, then in fact, could use that for other resources. So that, that part was true. We weren't a hundred percent sure of that, and got that result. That's the only thing that I know, is that, is that, is that what you remember?
And we did discuss that as well.
That's the only thing I can remember.
Anything else?
No, I just thought it was going to be turned over to her for her opinion, or whether or not they were going to, they didn't want to make the decision, being the BPU. At that point, they wanted her to make the decision, if they were gonna come in at all. Is that correct, Mr. Le Lonic, is that what I remember?
I think it's whether or not they had the right...
Or am I not remembering this correctly?
Mr. Eads, I, I do not recollect that conversation, because I was not involved with that. I know that in the BPU, we discussed, after research of this company, several aspects why we should or shouldn't entertain furthering our, our interaction with them, or even go to a letter of intent. And I don't think that I can say anything more succinct than Mr. President, who put it very, very rationally, that this Aqua is a utility management company, they're in business for a profit. So they go to, to cities, municipalities, to any place that has infrastructure, and they say, okay, we, we want to take this over. And so, the, the, the city or municipality, if they enter into that agreement, they transfer all of the assets to that entity for profit to be run. And then guess what? We don't have conversations about increasing utility rates here, we don't have citizens' concerns. Guess what? You get a bill in the mail, and you either pay it, or you don't have your utility. So the choice that we made with the BPU was not to further conversations or discussions, because we are not for profit. We, we act and operate for the citizens of the city of London, we're not for profit. So there, there is no shareholder, there's no corporate CEO to pay, there, there's no executive management to pay. And so, when we come with three years' worth of research, and, believe me, I'll say this until the end, we don't like to be here, I don't like to be here talking about why we need to raise rates. Nobody likes raises, or, or rates to be raised, nobody does. But it's a fact of life, it's a fact. And so, in our best judgment and opinion, and we have professionals, two engineering firms, and professionals in the industry who said, this plan is the best for the city of London, there's no fat on top, nobody's getting any other dime to pay for their salary out of this, this is just straight cost. So, yes, we chose not to pursue any further conversations with Aqua, because we're way too far into this process now, and they said, our fees are way, way, way too low, way too low as it stands right now. This is what they told us. And in our research with the other utilities that they are operating, we can do a lot better job, that was our consensus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Donna Martin. Please state your name, address, and you have five minutes, please.
My name is Donna Martin, I live at 231 South Main Street, here in London. And, um, I'm very concerned that all these rate hikes that we're gonna receive, well, I'm on a fixed income, I'm retired, and my income doesn't equal up to all the other raises that we're getting. And I don't understand that, okay, we got, we paid for a new water tower, but it's sitting there, we can't use it, and we gotta pay to get it fixed. How is that fair? How is that fair to the, to the residents of London? I mean, we paid for it, so why aren't, we aren't getting any benefit out of it? But yet, you want to raise all this money to pay for, to get it fixed? Well, why should we have to pay to get it fixed, when it shouldn't have been messed with to begin with? We should not have to pay for something that we paid for, that should have been working properly the whole time. It just don't make sense to me. And these increases, yeah, I understand there's increases, but this is getting out of hand. If you're on a fixed income, I get one dollar a month from Social Security, I do have a pension, but it doesn't keep up with all the stuff that's going on? And so, I've lived in my house this May, oh, mate, thirty years, and now I'm gonna have to give up my house, or give up eating, or something else, medicines, or whatever, so that I can keep my house? How is that right? How is that right? I've lived here thirty years. You tell me, where am I supposed to get that money? I can't pull it out of the sky. Nobody's handing me money. And I'll tell you this, since 2014, when I retired, I still get one dollar a month from Social Security. If you don't believe me, I can show you. And my other income? For four years, we got zero, zero. And the most I'm gonna get in May would be forty dollars a month. With everything the way it is now, you tell me, how am I supposed to keep my house?
Ma'am, you're living, you're telling us you're living on forty-one dollars a month?
No, that's not what I said, sir. No, I said, I get one dollar a month from Social Security.
Got that.
In May, on my retirement, I will get forty dollars extra a month.
Okay.
That's what I said. Now, you tell me, that's forty-one dollars? Okay, if you want to be, know my business, I get sixteen hundred and forty-three dollars a month. I still have a house payment, I still pay my taxes, my health insurance, and so, how do you expect me to keep my house? That I've lived in thirty years and keep my house up? I am not, you could go to my house, it's not trashy, it's not like some of these houses I've seen around here, that are still there. So you tell me, how am I supposed to make these payments? Am I supposed to sell my house, to go live somewhere else, when I've lived here thirty years? No comments?
Rich, did you mention some programs that are out there, foreseen years?
There are programs that are out there, also, our water, our water department here will work with you, if you have difficulty in paying your water, sewage, or your trash bill, they will work with you. And there are different entities in the community that will work with you also.
Well, I, I already get help from bridges on my gas, and once a year on my electric, but I'm still struggling, because you go to the grocery store, you go to the gas station, you do anything, everything is up, 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 up. And, what, am I supposed to go back to work? Well, I can't go back to work, because I have too many disabilities. I can't go back to work. So you tell me, what am I supposed to do to get these, so that I can afford to stay in my house for thirty years?
Eric, any comments?
Unfortunately, there's no great answer here, Donna.
Yeah, and you're my insurance guy, so you know I, I pay my bills.
I do know you pay your bills. I think, I think in the, the big picture, no matter what we do, you know, there's gonna be, there's problems that have to get fixed.
But you know what? That's, that's another thing. Yeah, there's problems, but why weren't these problems addressed years ago, or why are they just now coming to surface? And especially when it comes to that friggin' water tower, that we paid for, and it's not functioning, and we, we have to pay to get it fixed? Come on! What's, where's, where's that?
Well, the, the, the white people to talk to are sitting back there with the Board of Public Utilities, they have a better handle on that. However, when it was all said and done, it looks like, in order to get a water source that we could use, the water plant was gonna have to be reconfigured in some ways, and have to be redone.
But whose fault is that?
Well, that's a great question, because...
Yeah, I want to know whose fault is that, and why do we have to pay for somebody else's mistake?
Oh, that's, that's a great question, and I can't answer that for you. But unfortunately, there's...
And you know, and they're building all these, you want all this money for building new sewers and drains and everything? Well, who's building all these new houses? Those new houses out there on, off of fifty-six down there, those new apartment, those houses? And then the new apartments they want to build over here on Kenny Boulevard? Okay, so why can't they pay their share? Why do we have to pay for all of it? Why can't they pay for the sewer and the drainage?
As a matter of fact, they actually will be paying for that.
They have to pay.
These, these costs are going to transfer to them as well, when they are built. As a matter of fact, you know, you've had some really good questions, you talked about the water tower, and you talk about, you know, some of the issues we've had in the past. We, we can't blame the past administration, we are at this point now, and yeah, they probably should have done something about it before, but we don't want to sit here in 2023, and people look back and say, why didn't they do something about it before? Because we will be the they that they're talking about. Unfortunately, that water tower does not work. Well, it works, but it doesn't give us the water that we need, and it needs fixed. Some of the research wasn't, some of the testing wasn't done when they dug that well, and unfortunately, it, it's bad, I pay for it, just like you do. We, all of us here, we pay for that water plant that's sitting there. We all wish that it would work, and we're in the position here to get something done about it, so that it does work. We can't sit here later with future generations of London, saying, why didn't they ever fix this? And I can imagine what shape all of our infrastructure will be in in another ten, twenty years.
Well...
And then we don't want people coming to council ten, twenty years from now, and saying, this should have been fixed a long time ago, why didn't they do it? But now is our time to get this done.
Okay, but the bottom line is, it's, how long's that, uh, water tower been there?
Oh, it's been there far too long, I'd say one week is too long.
Okay, so...
And now it's been there a couple of years too long, so we can't continue to kick the can down the road, we have to do something about it.
Yeah, well, that's might be true, but why does the citizens have to pay again for something that we already are paying for?
Well, because it's gonna be the, the money that's generated in the city that pays for fixing the city's water plant, that's where it has to come from.
But why is that, why is that?
Because the...
It's not, we paid for it, and we paid for something to work, we didn't pay for something that we can't use, and here it's four, five years later.
Right. And similar to the sewage and drains and everything, they, they have to be fixed as well, and that money comes from the community to fix that. So it, it's similarly the same thing, the money has to come, e- even if the plant did work, there's gonna be routine maintenance that needs done on it, there's gonna be other work that needs to be done on it, and it's all...
Well, that's a, there's, that's a difference.
But I'm saying...
That's a difference.
But I'm saying, it's all gonna come from the same place in order to get that work done. It's gonna come from the citizens in the community to take care of that.
Well, my point is, you know what? For maintenance, okay, I can understand that, but to pay for something that should have never been broken, and to begin with, is just ridiculous. And another thing is, okay, I noticed, if you go down fifty-six, or you go north on Main Street, and you get past the courthouse, why is it all that, from there down that way is paved, but you go down fifty-six to the south, it's not repaved? Is it because there's businesses down there? Is government paying, the federal government paying to get those roads resurfaced? I asked, I, um, Facebooked, or messaged the mayor on this, I never got a response, but maybe he didn't get it, I'll give him the benefit of the doubt. Well, I did anyways. But, I mean, it seems like certain areas get better attention than others.
I think that Bill Long can address that.
Well, that, the fifty-six project, I mean, it's a note, that was a state project.
Yeah, that's not the city.
That was the state saying, you know, this, this year or last year, you know, we will pave from, what, forty-two, fifty, north, out to the city.
Okay. Okay.
And that's because they're state routes, so that's not ours.
Well, fifty-six north is too, I mean, south.
South, right, yeah. So, you know, next year or two, maybe, O'Donnell come say, hey, you know, we're gonna pave the next.
And then I have a, a question, um, I'm not sure if the mayor, am I out of time?
Did you have something, Bill, or, you got, okay? And ma'am, okay, you go ahead, we just have a couple more, because you've, over your five minutes.
So, um, is the governor, is he gonna give money for infrastructure to, like, London? West Jeff?
Okay, I, I can hopefully answer that, I would say, we are hopeful that we will receive some federal dollars. I've met with, a couple of us have, and I'm sure the mayor has as well, we've met with some of our local representatives, at least their, their representatives, and we are hopefully on the list to receive some type of federal dollars to help us out with our infrastructure.
Okay, so...
I know that Mike Carey, I know that Mike Carey, he is very interested in helping the cities that he represent, and he's been here to this town a couple times already, and he sent representatives here, and we're also fortunate enough that he is actually on the Ways and Means Commission, and that's exactly the place that he wanted to be, where he could actually help us potentially to get something done with our infrastructure. So we hope that we're gonna be looking at federal dollars to step in and to help us, because we're so far behind the eight ball with our infrastructure, that we're going to need federal dollars.
Well, how come we're so far behind?
Because we've kicked the can down the road, which we can't continue to do. Thank you.
Can I, can I say something, Henry?
Yes.
Donna, I, I don't want to say anything, but I've answered you every time on, on Messenger. I, I pride myself, I pride myself in that, so that's why I wanted to say that, but just to let you know, and Josh said it, it, the, the paving projects... Okay, and then, I, I speak to the governor's office quite often, and there's infrastructure money, right? And so, there was a big portion that came down, and then, I believe they gave the state of Ohio two hundred and fifty million dollars for the whole state of Ohio. And so, I always kid and say, we could spend two hundred and fifty million dollars on our infrastructure alone, so that money doesn't really trickle down to small communities after Cleveland, Cincinnati. In, in the budget, in the state budget. So, the one thing, municipalities our size, what we're pushing for is reinstatement of the local government fund, and that was kind of just a payment to everybody, everybody, the counties got it, and then they dispersed it, and everybody kind of got a little bit, right? And we used to use that for... And we used to use that, um, for infrastructure projects, for paving roads, was usually what we earmarked that money for. Well, that money went from $300,000, $400,000 a year down to like $20,000, $30,000 a year. So that was kinda cut back in the Kasich era when he was selling all the land and trying to bank as much money as he could. And so now we're really pushing to try to get that local government fund back because $400,000 a year could do a lot for the city of London. So that's kinda where I think we're gonna have the most luck, is trying to get the local government fund back together. Because when they do these big infrastructure bills, it, it doesn't really trickle down to Madison County, and then when it does, it's given to, um, people who are not compliant with the EPA. So then, then we don't get it either. So i- it's just, it's pretty difficult. But any grant we go after, any of that stuff, we stay on top of that, 'cause any free money we can get, and we're, we're pretty good at going out and getting free money, goes a long way for us. So I hope that helps a little bit.
Thank you again. One to Sherri, Charette, Cherie?
You did pretty good with the name.
Oh, thank you.
Share it with you?
Share, oh, yes. All right, you have...
Good evening, Mr. President, Miss Councilmembers, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have questions, all I have is concerns to express. And based upon the information in the Messenger, which we all received, you might not have all read it, but you got it, okay? The current base minimum rate for sewers is $1.50, okay? The proposed increase of $5.99, which is a retail gimmick, it's really $6. So look at it that way instead of $5.99, it's $6. To be effective on July 1 of 2023, would raise the base minimum to $7.49. That's a 399.9% increase, okay? I did the math on all this. The proposed second increase of $5.99 to be effective January 1 of 2024 raises the base minimum rate to $13.48. That's another 180% increase in your rates. And that's just six months later, July to January. You're gonna get another 180% increase. The proposed increase of $5.99 to be effective January 1 of 2025 would raise the base minimum rate to $19.47, resulting in a 144.5% increase. And that, uh, results in a, the, the increase is all over from in a six-month period, hang on to your hats, guys, 1,300% increase in two and a half years, okay? But thus, don't forget about the increase that's being proposed for the 2026 of another 3%. Have any of you ever received increases in your pay or your retirement pension that even comes close to these increased amounts? I know I haven't, and will never get increases like that in my retirement to compare to this proposal. I just received my water sewer trash bill, and it's $68.23 for one person, just for me. Imagine what the cost will be for a family of four or more, and if this con, this passes. What we will see if this increases are passed will be people and business shutting down, leaving London. Businesses that will be affected will be restaurants, nursing homes, elder care facilities, the hospital, schools, and churches. There'll be no new homes built, current and existing homes and apartments of London residents, no new renters when they find out what their water, sewer, and trash bills will be for the proposed 56 new apartments on Kenny Board, Kenny Boulevard, which I understand was only approved for 50. But the guy who bought it's gonna build 56, okay? A second hole was drilled and water was tested for the second water tower. The water tower has not been used in eight years due to poor planning and application. Now the city wants us to pay more than $3500, $350,000 to fix what should never have happened. Everyone in town knows what that land was used for, for many years, and chemicals that were used to farm that land. You talked about, uh, the fixing, and why has it been this way? And you talked about the money. It was announced today, or written today in the Messenger that's gonna be coming out, that the village of Mount Sterling has been approved to get a, a water tower for $1.8 million, and the people of that village are not gonna have to pay a dime. Not have to pay a dime. Why is that? Have you ever, has the council ever considered applying for federal government assistance through any agencies such as the Department of Urban Development, Ohio Public Works Commission, the Army Corps of Engineers? Ask, talk to our state and, and our federal representatives, what kinda help we can get. I didn't hear anybody say that they had talked to Dwyane or talked to either of our senators or our representatives that go to Washington. These questions must be asked of the people who we elect and representatives, and what we should be asking voting in the general elections. Don't forget about the proposed increase in the trash and recycle service. My family has lived in Madison County for over 125 years. They've lived in London for over 100 years. If these rates are approved, I will consider selling my house that my family has owned for 68 years, because I live at 184 Elm Street, right here in London. I live in the house where I grew up. How many more people will feel forced to do this so that they can afford to ca, take care of their families? It shouldn't be a case of making a choice of paying their water bill against feeding or clothing their families. No one should ever be forced to have to do that. It's really sad that it would ever come to that. To all of you here tonight, I ask that you talk to your friends, your neighbors, and if the council votes in favor of these increase, you remember who your elected officials are in the next election and decide if they have your best interests in mind. Can you really afford to live in London and continue to be gouged for mistakes that the previous official, city officials should've taken care of over the years? I know that there's a problem with the sewer, sewer. I, where I live, it's, it's sinking, it's dropping. Carol's had to have her basement pumped out four times, and she now can no longer have her insurance covered. She had to get a sump pump to keep it from, from flooding. My other next-door neighbor's on both sides of me, theirs flooded as well. So I know there's a problem. But what I don't know is why it can't be addressed at a more reasonable rate over a longer period of time as needed with assistance from the government rather than in one big chunk. What I would do if I were in your place is I would look at who needs it the most and address that, and then we move to the next one that's the worst. But you don't get all your money out of one pot and try to fix everybody at the same time, 'cause it's gonna disrupt the communities, it's gonna disrupt, disrupt the household, the flow of traffic all through the city of London. I wanna thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and I just wanted to, uh, respond to your, to your comments there. I'll, I'll say again that Mike Carey, Congressman, has been here in the city several times. He's on the State Ways and Means Commission. I know that I presented to him that we need federal dollars in order to fix our infrastructure because it's gonna be a very large number in order to get our infrastructure where it needs to be. I think it's a larger number than, uh, even this increase is going to call for, because it has been put off for so long and it can't continue to be put off.
And, and I don't deny that. But why do we have to do it in such a large chunk? Again, the village of Mount Sterling, and you'll read it probably tomorrow, whatever, it's on Newsweek, it's been printed, and I can show you if you want. They were approved for a new tower for that village, and I know Mount Sterling because I used to live near there. And they don't have to pay anything for it, because the mayor even said, or the guy who runs the government there, he praised the person that wrote, that did all the research and did all the writing of the proposals for the grants. Now, one of you made the comment about the tower. And I believe it was you, Mr. Mr. Council President, is I don't know why the, all the testing wasn't done. Why don't you know?
Because I wasn't on that administration, ma'am, when they signed that contract, and that's...
Okay.
And now their problems, or whatever issues we have now, they're from the past, but we're not gonna blame the past administration.
And that's not what I...
What we're, what we're gonna say is that we know what issues we have now, and now we're in position where something needs to be done, and we can't not do anything about it.
And I understand that.
In order to better...
I truly do. So somebody drop the ball back the line, okay? I'm not here to place blame on one person. What I'm saying is, was the EPA involved in testing the water? Like I said, everybody in this town, this, this county knows what was done there, all that farming that was done there, all those chemicals that were put on the, the land when it was farming, and knew that that land was bad. Why did you decide to even put a tower there to begin with?
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, Mayor Claus, were you, Council President at that time?
So, we were on, we were on, I was on council, and we found out since then that, um, the EPA did, that, that did not, and I don't know if they do yet, test for ammonia when they do those testings. They don't do tests for ammonia for some reason because it's not really found anywhere. So that's how it... TJ is our water expert, and this was, what, 10, 12 years ago? Do you wanna touch on that about the EPA?
The testing...
Yep. Microphone, please. Thank you. Just so we can hear you on the recording. Thank you.
From what I know, all the testing was done that the EPA requires. Once the plant was built, put into, come into operation, that's when they found the other contaminants that were never required to be tested. So that's what we're running into now, and that's what we're trying to fix.
Okay, so there is apartments being built on the corner of Kenyon Road, which is farmland. There's, there's houses building, been built on, on 56 that is farmland. There is a new restaurant out on 56 that was on farmland. So you know that there's chemicals in the ground. Somebody did not do their due diligence. Somebody along the line did not do their due diligence and did not have the best interest of the citizens of London when that was done, and now we're having to suffer the consequences.
Yeah.
So that's all I have to say.
And...
Thank you. I, I have a couple other things, if you don't mind. The, the other thing was, you talked about meeting with state officials and federal officials. I actually have a lunch every month with state officials, Mike Carey's office, a representative comes and we have lunch, and every time they come, they ask, what's going on? How can we help? And this is always the first thing I talk to them about.
And you give an answer?
They, they, well, I ask for, I ask for money, and, and they do not give it to me. Um, and so...
So would you suggest that you give us some names and so we can plug them with, uh, you know, requests?
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
We have to follow them, you can help them, like, if they want.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So if you could give us names of people that we can contact...
Yeah, I mean, you could just Google whichever one you wanna, you know, Mike Carey's office out of the federal level, um, you know, Brian Stewart here, the governor's office comes. Also, when you talked about Mount Sterling, Mount Sterling did get a quote-unquote free water tower. That was through the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, for about $450,000. They were able to go after that grant because they, they are a small government, and that means you have to be under 5,000 people. So they fall into a category that we don't fall into to be able to get that money. But we do go after OPWC money, and we actually were just awarded $700,000 from OPWC, which is going to work on our storm sewer. So that's going into the storm sewer project that'll be done on the south end here very soon. So out of that same round, they went and got this water tower for $440,000, $450,000 out of the small government fund, which we're not allowed to go after because we're over 5,000 people. And then, but in that same round, we went after $700,000 and received $700,000 in free money. Um, I'm actually gonna do my state-of-the-city address, but we've received almost $2 million this past year in free grant money for different projects. So we're going after free money, we're doing everything we can to get free money. But also, there's, there's, well, I, I'll, I'll speak about that in a little bit. So, but, you know, there's also an article on the Madison Messenger that, um, their water, Mount Sterling's water and sewer is going up 8.7%, so like $3. And I don't know if you've talked to anybody who lives in Mount Sterling, but their water bill is pretty, pretty large because they built such a large water facility, more than maybe what they needed, but they built a, a very nice water facility, and their water bill is very high in my eyes, and they are, they just got another 8.7%. That article was just in.
How much you can trade money for water?
Okay.
To me, it's not even real, so I...
Okay.
I'm one person in my house. And to think about all the other families that are here and what they're going to have to pay, and it's, it's just, it's sad that it's come to this.
Yeah.
And I realize it's not your fault because the previous administrations didn't do it. You're the ones that are getting the earful now, people like me.
Yeah.
However...
I appreciate it.
You need to step back from it and look at a better overall plan to, on how to use the money where you need to use it. And not, okay, let me put it this way, you got a doughnut in your hand, okay? You don't stick the whole thing in your mouth to eat it, you take off the bite to satisfy yourself. So that's what you need to do, you need to step back and take it all. And I know you're gonna tell me, no, we've done that, Sherri, but I'm not sure if you have done, done deep enough.
All right, thank you. Who to contact? Who to contact?
I think that's gonna be part of the state-of-the-city address.
Right, right.
In a few minutes.
And then, and then for, yep, and then for, uh, Sherri, Cherie, Cherie?
Charette.
Charette? You, you said you give us an earful, and we do appreciate it, or at least I appreciate it, because this is what we need to hear. We're here to hear from you. So I appreciate hearing from you on this.
Well, I know the name is not your fault, it was in the Messenger, it was at 7:00. And I called, find out, and it's known it's at 6:30, and it's always been 6:30.
Thank you.
But thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, we appreciate it. If, if you weren't here, we'd be talking to chairs, so, thank you.
I have, when, I didn't sign up, but it seemed to my attention. My name is Carol Ames, I live at 101 Elm Street Drive.
Okay.
And, and, uh, my neighbors' yards...
Just a moment.
Thought I was loud enough.
Well, we have a recording, so it's recording your voice.
My, my neighbors' yards, there's about five or six included. Now, I have lived there 59 years. We never had a problem with drainage until 2010. What I see is happening here, you're allowing all these new homes to be coming in, they're gonna put the infrastructure in, but you're putting all that drainage into sewers that are crumbling? I have no storm drainage. They built that addition, no curb drains. The only way I got at the end of our street that goes out on Elm, whenever we would get snow and rain, we would have nothing but ice clear back, and I came to the city twice. So when I had to come a third time, I just looked him in the face and I meant every word of it, and I don't like to do things like this, but I told him, I said, you have got to address this, there's no curb to take the water, no drains to take the water away. If I slide through there and get in a wreck, I'm telling you, I'm suing you right now. And I mean what I say, but with you putting all these homes in, into something that is poor right now, what's gonna happen? You can't address all of these issues at the same time. I did have Andy come out during COVID and look, and he saw my problem. I did have Andy come out during COVID and look, and he saw my problem. We just don't have any place with the water to go. So, I had flooded enough, I had to put sun pump, I put ten thousand dollars in my basement to get the water out, and no place to take the sun pump, so it comes up, goes out, empties in my yard, rotates right back around. My sun pump is running every fifteen minutes right now. Now, for two straight years, I put eight bags of topsoil around my house, my flowerbeds, for the last two years, is that sixteen big bag of topsoil. Where's that water going? Where, where is it going? We know what happens when soil disappears. You've got a sinkhole, and we've had sinkholes here in London. So, but we are talking about six homes whose yards are going like this. No place for the water to go. So, that, that is my concern about allowing all this building going up. That water is going to drain down to our bad sewers and storm drains. But for those that are paying storm, to get rid of your stormwater, we don't have any. I don't have any option.
I can tell you what the problem is, because she's talking about right out in front of my house, where Park Avenue East turns in there. There's a storm drain right there.
That's the ones.
And the top of the drain is this far above-
They put it in high part of the street.
So, it can't get into the storm drain. So, somebody could come out and drill a hole or something in there, so at least the water could seep away. Because sometimes you'll come through there, I've seen the kids come home from school, and the water is out ten feet, they don't, they can't get across there, and neither can the people who have wheelchairs that come from the nursing facility up the road.
So, it's East Park?
So, they put drains in, yeah.
East Park, yeah, yeah.
But they put them in the high part of the street.
Okay, all right.
So, I, I'm sorry I, I didn't sign up, but I just wanted to know, this is my concerns about adding all these homes that are going to be dumping water and sewer into places where the sewers are crumbling, really.
All right.
Now, I've lived there. My house is sixty-three years old. I've been there fifty-nine years. I think our street has been paved once. Right now, if I want to sweep up my curbs, I get nothing but gravel. We've got grass growing up in cracks in our street, I think. I remember once, and I had a drain in the front of my house, went out to the street. City come in, the only time I remember blacked out, and they blacked out under that drain. So, these are things. I know it's not your fault. I've been worked places where, but it comes down to you, you are who's in charge now, and you get the brunt of it. And it's not fair, but that's the way the world works, and I can't see putting everybody in debt. I worry about older people who are, I'm old. I shouldn't say that, but I am old. And those that are on fixed, I've been retired since nineteen ninety-nine, went back and worked part-time for twelve years, but my, my income is based on what I retired at in ninety-nine. So, I, I just, these people that are living on a thousand, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, I don't know how they're going to make it. I, I really don't, and that is who my concern is. I know things have to be built. I don't agree with all the, the way the world's going. I don't even agree with Washington. You can't keep adding debt and not having any way to pay for it. You just can't do it. You balance that budget, and I know sometimes you have to bite the bullet, and it's not fun. It is not fun. But I, I don't know what I'd do. If I were in your position, you either eat, have medicine, or do without. And I think that's what you're going to see, and it's sad. It is really sad, because I don't want to live in a big city. That's why I've stayed here all these years. So, I do appreciate you listening. I'm sorry, but this is my concerns of, of adding new developments.
Thank you. And what was your name again, ma'am?
Carol Ames. A-M-S.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we have Anita Likens. Please state your name, address, and you have five minutes, please.
Five minutes?
Everybody else had five minutes, too.
No one did.
I will gladly take the five minutes.
Right, exactly.
Thank you so much for the five minutes.
The questions didn't count.
President, council members, administration, not going to talk about London, but local involvement means national impact, and thank you all for showing up. I love seeing people sitting out there. As we've talked about before, there's been many times, it's been you and me, so wonderful to see you all. I'd like to read to you, and I will be reading to you the syllabus this evening, from the Supreme Court of the United States. It's Dobbs, the State Health Officer of the Mississippi Department of Health et al. versus Jackson's Women's Health Organization et al. This is the United States of Appeals for the Fifth Circuit. This is actually, like I said, is the syllabus. It is not the entire two hundred and thirteen pages of decision that was done for overturning Roe versus Wade. It's just the syllabus, but it captures, I believe, a lot of the good items that were involved in that decision, and, like I said, I'll be reading it over the next few weeks as we meet, but I will start. Mississippi's Gestational Age Act provides that, except in medical emergency or in the case of severe fetal abnormality, a person shall not intentionally or knowingly perform or induce an abortion of unborn human being if the probable gestational age of the unborn human being has been determined to be greater than fifteen weeks. This is under the Mississippi Code. The respondents, Jackson Health, Women's Health Organization, an abortion clinic, and one of its doctors challenged the act in federal district court alleging that it violated this court's precedence establishing a constitutional right to abortion. In particular, Roe versus Wade, which was four-ten U.S. one-thirteen, and Planned Parenthood of southeastern Pennsylvania versus Casey, which was five-oh-five U.S. eight-thirty-three. The district court granted summary judgment in favor of the respondents and permanently enjoined enforcement of the act, reasoning that Mississippi's fifteen-week restriction on abortion violates this court's cases forbidding states to ban abortion pre-viability. The Fifth Circuit affirmed it. Before this court, the petitioners defend this act on the grounds that Roe and Casey were wrongly decided and that the act is constitutional because it satisfies rational basis review. The court held, "The Constitution does not confer a right to abortion. Roe and Casey are overruled, and the authority to regulate abortion is returned to the people and their elected representatives." And just as a side note, you and I have been talking about this before when we talked about the Constitution, the rights that were therefore outlined, the Bill of Rights and the Declaration of Independence, going on with this. A, the critical question is whether the Constitution, properly understood, confers a right to an abortion. Casey's controlling opinion skipped over that question and reaffirmed Roe solely on the basis of stare decisis, which is the legal principle of determining points of litigation according to precedent. A proper application of stare decisis, however, requires an association and assessment of the strength of the grounds on which Roe was based. The court therefore turns to the question that the Casey plurality did not consider. First, the court reviews the standard that the court's cases have used to determine whether the Fourteenth Amendment's referral to liberty protects a particular right. The Constitution makes no express reference to the right to obtain an abortion, but several constitutional provisions have been offered as a potential homes for an implicit constitutional right. Roe held that the abortion right is part of rights to privacy that springs from the First, Fourth, Fifth, Ninth, and Fourteenth Amendments. See four-ten U.S. at one pages, one fifty-two and one fifty-three. The Casey court grounded its decision solely on the theory that the right to obtain an abortion is part of the liberty protected by the Fourteenth Amendment's due process clause. Others have suggested that support can be found in the Fourteenth Amendment's equal protection clause, but that theory is squarely foreclosed by the court's precedents, which establish that a state's regulation of abortion is not a sex-based classification and is thus not subject to the heightened scrutiny that applies to such classifications. See Goldegi and Bray versus Alexandra Women's Health Clinic. Rather, regulations and prohibitions of abortions are governed by the same standard of review as other health and safety measures. Secondly, next, the court examines whether the right to an obtained abortion is rooted in the nation's history and tradition and whether it is an essential component of ordered liberty. The court finds that the right to abortion is not deeply rooted in the nation's history and tradition. The underlying theory on which Casey rested, that the Fourteenth Amendment's due process clause provides substantive as well as procedural protection for liberty, has long been controversial. The court's decisions have held that the due process clause protects two categories of substantive rights, those rights guaranteed by the first eight amendments of the Constitution, and those rights deemed fundamental that are not mentioned anywhere in the Constitution. In deciding whether a right falls into either of these categories, the question is whether the right is deeply rooted in our history and tradition and whether it is essential to this nation's scheme of ordered liberty. Timms versus Indiana, was that a tapping? Oh, I'm just getting good. Oh, don't you have a question on any of this? We can go on for a while. Gentlemen, thank you so much. I'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Raymond Anthony.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Raymond Anthony. I reside at five-twenty-one Eaton. I've got five questions and, and one comment, or two comments. I'd rather read the five questions and read my two comments before you answer any of the five questions. The first question is, this eighteen and a half million dollar water and sewer project, is that based on the BPU's educated guess, or does City Council have a written estimated proposal on each, on each one of these projects, which includes labor and material costs? Second, will the taxpayers of London pay the eighteen point five million, or will there be federal and or state monies used to lower the monthly cost of these water and sewer projects? That's already been addressed. However, even if we do get federal or state monies, it's, it's still going to be, be a big chunk of what the City of London's taxpayers are going to have to pay of this eighteen point five million. Question three, the BPU is projecting a three percent yearly increase starting in two thousand and twenty-six. How many years is it going to take to pay this off? Number four, when a new business, new homeowner, new housing development, or a new apartment complex come into London, where does the tap-in fees money go to? Does it go to the cost of this water and sewer project, or does it go into some other fund? Question five, the East Water Treatment Plant. Currently, as I was aware of last, at the last meeting, there are two wells at this site. City Council approved funds to find a better water source just past Spring Valley and Route forty-two. Now, the BPU is proposing that a new production well will be drilled, estimated at one point two-seven million. Where would this proposed production well be drilled, and since we have two wells already, why do we need a third one? My two comments. The cost of the proposed water and sewer project is eighteen and a half million. As everyone knows, there are always cost overruns on any major project. In reality, this eighteen point five million proposed water sewer project will cost even more at the very end. My last comment. A year last May, City Council put on the May ballot to increase the levy fund for three things: fire and EMS, a new police station, and a community center. That was totally voted down. Last, last fall, the City Council again came to the voters and asked for another levy for fire and EMS and a police station. That also was voted down. What I'm trying to get at is, consider when you do this eighteen point five million project that's proposed. Take it in steps. I know we all want that money right away to fix everything, but I'm saying sometimes common sense overrules anything else. And I would like to see City Council move in an orderly fashion in, in doing some of this work, rather than just funding the whole project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I'm sure some of your, well, I'm sure most of your comments will, and questions will be answered during the legislation part that we have this evening. Thank you. One to Tommy Boyd. Please state your name, address, and five minutes, please.
All right. Mine's pretty short and sweet. Tommy Boyd, forty-eight North Union Street, London, Ohio. First was a question on sewer and water deposits. When you buy a home in London, do you get those back when you move out of London? That was the main question. Anybody?
I'm going to take a stab at that.
You got this one, all right.
All right.
I expect the same question.
There you go.
From what I was, from what I gathered, they wait till your bill's totally paid for, confirmation that you have moved, won't have another bill, then it's put into the system for a refund, so it can take one to two months, but yes, you'll get your refund.
If it has been one to two months, should they?
That is, the one you're talking about is not true. I investigated it.
Yep.
That is not correct.
Cool. So, it sounds like you've contacted and already got home.
I sure did. I saw it on Facebook, and I went and checked it out.
Good job. So, yeah, that one's good. Um, yeah, everyone else has kind of commented on my next piece, so I kind of scratched that one off. Very well said. That's pretty much what there is to it. I think the proposed additions, changes, are exactly what we're needing. TJ, getting the bigger water holding tower out there, getting our additions there, getting the water plant. You know, we were asking, where'd we come up with this? You know, two thousand and twenty-one was July. I think I started saying, hey, I ran into an engineer, said we can get ammonia out of this. I'm glad we brought that up, and a year later, here we are. You know, that's something that we want to kind of keep on top of. However, I do agree that there's a lot with the different funds. And so, I think something to help ease the people into these additions, you know, because breaking down the math, it's forty percent a year from two thousand and seventeen that it would go up to be at the price at two thousand and twenty-five. And so, I think to help everybody out, getting that actual analysis from Agua is the best bet to do. I'm not really sure why we didn't go through with that, but that would be saying, hey, we're doing what's best for the city. Why didn't we do what we thought we'd do, which was get a free analysis of everything else? So, if we're able to check that out still, I'd say, hey, go for it. Because saying this is best without anything else, especially when it's looking over our system anyway, telling us what's wrong, what's going to cost a good amount anyway, we might as well get it from them, if it's free. Or, that was my other question, were they going to do it for free, Steve? Yes, no? Did Agua coming out and actually looking over everything, did that cost us anything?
I don't know. I've already addressed that.
All right. And so, I mean, that's what he came in and actually gave the presentation on. So, pretty much something we've approved up here was denied by your committee. And so, that's where our kind of confusion on the difference in price raises now, I think is coming up. In the end, though, between the eighteen million, it sounds like the million and a half for the Madison County Connect, that's kind of our main emergency need. Is that kind of right? Need to get that done, or? Okay. And so- Okay, and so that's where the extra thirteen million for adding on for the additions, and the extra houses and the expansions, it's a great thought. But I'm pretty sure about five million of that eighteen million is directly affecting people within the city that, hey, maybe we could look into, once again, maybe twenty percent up a year from two thousand seventeen instead of forty percent, and look into something else. If we'd be able to shoot it down, I'd be happy with that. So we could actually look into what the real numbers are and see how much more we have to fix. But otherwise, there's more, if we do have an emergency need on getting that connect on, it's understandable why, have to do what we gotta do. That's all for me. Thank you much.
Thank you. Onto our committee reports. Do you have any committees? Let's see here, they all meet coming up here soon. Mr. Eads?
I've got one.
Okay, Mr. Hayes, you?
Board of Public Utilities met on January twenty-sixth at six thirty. The only thing that we did, there was the executive session for personnel situation, and that was the only thing that was covered. And after that, we were, we ended the meeting.
Okay, Mr. Eads?
I have not been to a committee meeting since the last meeting. Finance should be next Monday. Is that true?
Yeah, Finance, February sixth, Monday, six P M.
Okay.
Nothing other than the next public service meeting will be March first, six P M.
All right, Mr. Hayes?
A public service meeting will be February the thirteenth. Safety me, I'm sorry, safety meeting, February thirteenth at five P M in the building back here, or in the office back here. We changed it from a Tuesday night to a Monday night.
Okay. Is there a same thing?
I have nothing new.
Okay, Mr. Stahl?
I have nothing. I'll be attending the Finance and the Safety Committee in the next two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Onto our city official reports.
So like we've spoke about in the past few meetings, I always give a State of the City address, so I was wanting to come out and give that tonight. So please bear with me. I am honored to present the State of the City address for the great city of London, Ohio. As we begin twenty twenty-three, we reflect on a very busy twenty twenty-two year in which many things were accomplished. I would like to take a moment and thank my administration, our department heads, our employees, City Council, the citizens, because without this strong team, the important work of continuing to improve London would not have been possible. I eagerly look forward to twenty twenty-three, and we will continue to serve the people of London while managing an effective and efficient government. So much has happened in the past year. I cannot possibly discuss everything, but I do wanna talk about each department and mention some of the important achievements of twenty twenty-two and some goals for twenty twenty-three. I will start with our utilities. We currently have a great Board of Public Utilities Board that's working alongside the administration and the departments they oversee. So the office here in City Hall, the Board of Public Utilities Office. In twenty twenty-two, efficiency was a focus. The office staff processed one thousand six hundred and five cellular meters into the billing software. In October of twenty twenty-two, they entered into a contract with Invoice Cloud as a new online payment solution for water, sewer, and sanitation's monthly bills. They will go live with the Invoice Cloud this month. This will provide new options for paying your bills online, including Pay by Text, PayPal, Apple Pay, Google Pay, and Venmo. In twenty twenty-three, they will work to process the remaining cellular meters as they are installed and encourage customers to sign up for e-bills. And also, our quarterly flyers will be mailed and emailed to customers, which provide information for all departments. In the sanitation department, twenty twenty-two has continued to see improvements. The department improved service by going automated in twenty twenty with the new trash trucks. We have seen a large increase of trash and recycle pickups in the past year. With the new trucks, they have been able to stay on schedule with both residential and commercial accounts. These trucks have improved our Bureau of Workman compensation claims dramatically. The transfer station continues to be open on Saturdays to enable citizens to drop off their bulk trash and yard waste on weekends. In twenty twenty-three, they have some goals of working on getting all the rear load customers to be converted to the front load customers. The new trash compactor will be coming soon for the transfer station, and that will be provided by Rumpke, which is part of their contract. In the wastewater department, twenty twenty-two was also a busy year. They installed a hundred and seventy-five foot of eight-inch sewer lines on East Second Street to replace a deteriorated sewer main. They were awarded a contract for the screw press to replace the belt filter press for sludge. Began the preliminary engineering for the east side trunk sewer design with Burgess and Nipo engineers. Repaired the map storage building with a new roof, soffit gutters, and downspouts, and installed new electrical line at the London Correctional Institute or institution to restore service to the flow meter that's out there. In twenty twenty-three, it'll definitely keep their department busy with the construction of the new press, screw press project. Sewer lining projects at East Lincoln and South Walnut Street are planned. Gravity thickener tank will be repaired or replaced. Scada system will be upgraded and identify and reduce odor sources at the wastewater treatment plant. In the water department, twenty twenty-two was a year of challenges with progress on the horizon. The board and staff continues to work on the East Water Treatment Plant so that the city can process more water. As we all know, the plant was built on an aquifer that contains ammonia. We all know that by now. This was one of the toughest issues of how to tackle when becoming mayor. We have made much progress, and the finish line looks to be in sight. With funding, we hope to be able to have that water plant up and producing by the end of the year. The department was also able to repair and replace a contact tank bearing, replaced or repaired all the fire hydrants throughout the city that needed attention. This was a large focus of ours this past year, and I'm proud of all the departments that helped make this happen. Started the installation of the cellular meters at residents and have completed over sixteen hundred installations. They will work to have all three thousand six hundred and sixty-seven cellular meters installed by the end of twenty twenty-three. We hope that twenty twenty-three will be a year of improvements. With the continued effort at the East Water Treatment Plant, we will also focus on the current plant. With much-needed upgrades will be a priority this year. The department will also be working on water main upgrades and a stricter valve turning program. The Board of Zoning, the Building and Zoning Department. Twenty twenty-two was a busy year even with the crazy housing market. Our Building Department issued three hundred and fifty-nine total permits, in which thirty-five were for dwellings. The amount of dwelling permits is great, but we are gonna see it rising over the next two years with the Brooks Edge expansion and the Polty project. It's a very exciting time for the residential market in London. The increase of the zoning officer position from ten to twenty hours has been a success. The department is able to be more efficient and be able to address more violations. In the Auditor's Office, just like other departments, we are continuing to upgrade our technology. They implemented the check positive pay and ACH positive pay to protect all the city funds. In December twenty twenty-two, they implemented the ACH vendor payments. They currently have sixteen vendors enrolled and expect to see that number grow throughout twenty twenty-three. The finances for the city last year were good, even with an uncertain economy. The overall city's revenue in twenty twenty-two was twenty million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and two dollars and eighty-eight cents, with the total year's expenses being nineteen million, four hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and eighteen cents. I'm proud to say that in the seven years I've been mayor, the city has never spent more money than it's received and has continued to stay in the black. Street Department, twenty twenty-two was a year of repairs. The State Route fifty-six and thirty-eight paving project with conjunction of ODOT took place this past year, and that looks very nice. We repaired multiple storm sewer and catch basins around town, added a new twelve-inch storm sewer to Mount Street and a twenty-four-inch storm sewer to Grayson Avenue, installed two new storm sewers across Main Street, purchased a new camera system, which is able to internally view multiple storm sewer lines and multiple sanitary sewers. This tool will continue to help us locate where we need to do work in our aging infrastructure. In twenty twenty-three, we'll continue to focus on that infrastructure. They will be replacing a twelve-inch storm sewer on Olive Street with an eighteen-inch sewer and adding a twenty-four-inch storm sewer on Merrymont Avenue. A new ditch on Andrews Court will be built, and they'll be looking to do repairs on streets with a microsealing process. And they will continue to work on the storm water system throughout the whole city. In the Police Department, in twenty twenty-two, they increased their traffic enforcement efforts, which resulted in a significant decrease in crashes. They have initiated a school resource officer program with London schools in addition to the creation of Safety Town Event for the children of London. They fell short on one of the most important goals, which was seeing a physical improvement to the facility with the funding of a modern building based on a completed needs assessment. This looms as a very important need for the community to address. In twenty twenty-three, one of the goals will be to increase their impaired driving enforcement by ten percent, including the successful prosecution of those offenders. They will look to improve their physical office layout by remodeling current spaces to make the workflow more efficient and to increase usable office space until there's a modern facility. Additionally, they will strive to improve officer wellness as well as a response to the community crisis incidents with the creation of a police program. They are also looking to update obtained equipment and operations, such as duty handguns and a license plate camera system. The London Division of Fire and EMS last year had a four percent increase in calls for service. They responded to two thousand seven hundred and twenty total calls, in which two thousand six hundred and thirty-four were within the city. Eighteen percent of them were for fire, eighty-two percent were for EMS. Average response time within the city was three minutes and ten seconds. Of those calls, they responded to a total of fifty-four reported fires and a hundred and thirty-seven motor vehicle crashes. The department also conducted twenty CPR and first aid classes for a total of seventy-five students, as well as the high school students that require CPR to graduate. The department, along with Madison County Jobs and Family Services, conducted their toy drive, which assisted two hundred and eighty-nine families and five hundred and eighty-one children. The department provided K four students with fire prevention materials at both London and St. Patrick's, as well as multiple presentations for both schools. The department entered all hydrants into the city, into the system for the GPS coordinates, as well as flushed and maintained over six hundred hydrants. A few things the division has planned for twenty twenty-three is they wanna increase their CPR programs, as well as implement a home risk reduction program to include trip hazard smoke detectors and general life safety initiatives. Of note, they're awaiting the delivery of their new fire engine. When we purchased the fire engine, it was a one point four seven percent interest rate. To purchase that same truck today, according to the salesperson, would have cost us almost double and would have probably taken two to three years to deliver at a much higher interest rate. The London Parks and Recreation, it was another year of just serving the citizens and especially our youth. Youth Sports had another great year with so many children participating. With the two volleyball leagues and basketball leagues, saw hundreds of kids come through our program. They upgraded the pool lighting to allow after-hour rentals to bring in more funds to the city. The playground at Merrimack was constructed, and it's also being heavily used, just like Access Cowling. Speaking of Cowling, they did the electrical upgrades that will help for more utilization and events at the park. Next year, they're gonna be focusing on some growth to revitalize the Ball Diamonds at Merrimack and Park Avenue, to create a sand volleyball league and bring back adult softball. Also looking to install outdoor pickleball courts at Cowling Park and resurface and paint the swimming pool. The youth programs will continue to grow, and we need to grow with them. We expect the three programs to have upwards of six hundred participants, and we need to work on a long-term solution for those programs. In closing, twenty twenty-two experienced a lot of growth, and twenty twenty-three looks like a lot of the same. The establishment of the revitalization district in the citywide community reinvestment area entices homes and businesses to the community and will continue to do so. We are seeing that with a spike in housing and some new restaurants in town. Another focus for the year will be to find other avenues to help us get information out to the public. We are looking into some communication tools that may possibly help us get our information out to the citizens of London. Please know that we are always available for questions, comments, and concerns. And as we talked about earlier, I take pride in that I answer every email, return every call, and have never turned down a meeting in seven years, even if you just wanna come in and yell at me. I will continue to have an open door policy, and if anyone has a question or wants to talk, please, please, please reach out to me. Now onto the mayor fun fact, which is a number, one million, nine hundred and eleven thousand. In twenty twenty-two, we were awarded many small grants, but we have three large ones for free money grants. A seven hundred thousand dollar Ohio Public Works Commission grant that was awarded to help the Third Ward Storm Sewer Project slated for this year. This project should help with the storm water drainage throughout the city. We also won a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for the Third Ward Neighborhood Revitalization Program. Then, a four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar grant was obtained to pay off for the demolition of the Old School and Gym. Just in those three grants, we have saved the city one million, nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars. We will continue to go after every grant we can to improve London and take some of the financial burden off the city and the citizens. As a final reflection, twenty twenty-two, this has been another difficult year for many. We never expected the economy to decline, but I'm proud to say that we are not slowing down. We will continue to improve and make London an even better place to live, work, and play and raise your family. We have continued to be financially responsible, and being effective and efficient is what we strive for, and we will continue to do that for years to come. So thank you for your time. God bless you all, and God bless the great city of London.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I don't wanna comment, but two things. Would you mind emailing that to me so we can get that in the minutes also? And I'd really like to read it, because it was hard to follow along with all, there was a lot of information there. And secondly, along the same lines, I would personally would like to see you put that on the community bulletin board if people wanna read it.
Yeah, we do that every year. Yeah, every year we change it into PDFs and, or JPEGs, and we put it out on the social media and then onto the website, I believe. And then I'll email all you guys this tonight, and you guys can go through it. And if you have any questions, because it is a lot of information to take all at once. But feel free to reach out to me. Just super proud of what we've been able to do. And I know we take it on the chin sometimes, but I think that's part of the job. And, but in my heart of hearts, I feel like we're doing the best that we can do for the city of London. And that's not just me, but it's the employees, the department heads, and you guys. So thank you guys for everything you do too. Appreciate it.
And I would agree, this council here, especially, we've had a lot of work we've completed and we've, you know, put our best foot forward and stopped kicking cans down the road. So I'm really proud of the job we've done up here as well. Moving on down our agenda, we do need to amend the agenda for this evening. It is missing ordinance one eighteen twenty-three. So we've removed quite a bit of legislation from last week. However, ordinance one eighteen twenty-three was not printed on this as well. So I'd like to make a motion that we amend this agenda this evening to add one eighteen twenty-three to our old business.
A second.
Second, all right. Roll call to amend that, to add one eighteen twenty-three to our old business. Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
And Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Okay. Agenda has been amended. All right, so one to our old business, we do have a tabled item. One fifty-one twenty-two. 15122, and that continues to be tabled, correct?
Correct.
And we have 11823, motion to read by title or number?
So moved. We're doing that first or 115?
Let's see here.
We should have 115, 16, 17. And then 118.
That's the second reading. Okay, I see what you're saying. Let's see here, it's 118. Okay, let's move that down here. I got you, thank you.
You added there so you wouldn't forget.
Yeah, yeah, I added, I put it at the top so I wouldn't forget. I should have added to the bottom. Thank you. Alright, so we've gone through our table item. Now on for the second reading. Ordinance 11523, motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
Alright. Ordinance 11523, sponsored by Rich Hayes and Henry Comer, and ordinance amending section 1048.05 of the codified ordinances. And let's see here. And this is our legislation that we've been talking about this evening, changing the rates for our water. And let's see here, our charges for fees for sewer and service in the city of London. Mr. Lealonic, would you like to come forward with those, with some more information here?
Hello? Might answer any questions? Do you want me to further elaborate? You want me to address some of the audience's concerns? You tell me how you want to do this.
Just to elaborate on the difference here, the increases and how they will proceed after that.
Okay, so we have four increases altogether with the ordinances. Do we cover them all at once?
No, we'll just cover 11523, and then we'll move on to the next.
And which one is that?
This one, sewer.
Sewer, that's the base rate of 599 per month?
Yes.
Okay. So, so the, the ordinance is to increase the base rate from $1.50 a month to 599 a month, beginning in July of 2023. Again, an additional increase the following January, and another increase the following January of '25, all of 599. So at the, at the end of that, and I've got all of the, all of the increases together here. It'd be easy for me to discuss all of those, but we'll take this however you want to. At the end of the day, it's going to be $17.97 increase, the base rate per month.
Okay, and then a 3% increase there?
3% increase every year thereafter.
Okay, and that's to help keep up with our current infrastructure needs.
With inflation, which, which we have not done.
Right.
I gave a lengthy presentation last meeting on the last increases for water and for sewer, and it's been five and seven years respectively.
Right.
Okay, so we know that inflation last year was 8 point something percent that, you know, we, we were not able to, to capture.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on 11523?
Question?
Yes.
What's these rates, how do they compare to other towns or cities as far as the amount? I know there's a lot of people that, or several people that complained about the increases. And I just wonder, I've heard in the past that London has pretty low rates compared to other places.
Mr. Hit, yes. The, and I, I will interject now with the Aqua. Chairman Vest told me that, that he had a private conversation with the folks at Aqua. And not only did they suggest that our rates are extremely well below our peers, but with the proposed infrastructure improvements, they concluded that our proposed infrastructure improvements were exactly needed and probably what they'd be looking at doing too. So I'm sorry, I was not aware of that, but just, you know, tack that on. So although I have worked in the city for the last 22 years and have spent 25 years living in the county, I currently don't reside in London. Not for lack of want, it's for lack of the ability to find a downsized property when we were empty nesters. And so I reside in Grove City. And I can tell you that even with these increases, we are going to be, you know, two-thirds cheaper than, than where I live in Grove City. We have done studies around our peer counties and cities, and we are still well below and will be well below what they are charging.
I got another question. As far as comparison to cities, the Aqua services, is that same true? Is true the same?
Well, see, Andy, you've got to go on a case-by-case scenario, okay? Figuring where they're at, they run, or utility departments throughout the Midwest, and they have some small, some small service areas. They have a lot of large service areas that, you know, the economies of scale are not the same. So I can't answer that question for you. All I know is what they've told, what I heard and what they've told Count or Chairman Vest.
Okay, any further questions?
Mr. Lealonic, before we make a final decision, are we going to see an actual financial breakdown? So we know that we have five different projects for a total cost of about $18.5 million. But there's going to be, correct me if I'm wrong, there's going to be loans that have to be gathered or bonds that have to be issued to pay for this upfront, right? Where you're raising the rates, as you said before, basically so that we can cover those expenses. Is there going to be a breakdown? Are we going to be able to see what the, what the expense is, what the loan amount? If there's zero, zero interest loans that we may get through the Public Works Commission? Any bonds, any grants? Can, can we see that breakdown before we make a decision?
You can, yes. I can show you that service coverage and breakdown.
Yeah, I would really like to see that before the next meeting, if you, if you wouldn't mind providing that to city council. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got a question?
Yes.
Got a question, Mr. Lealonic? Playing devil's advocate here, and you've heard numerous people speak up tonight. Anyway, do we have any points in here that we can break that would lower this in any way, shape, or form? Is there anything that we can do to lower this 18 and a half million dollars?
Okay, well, this is where I probably have to, to address some concerns and speak to that.
Okay.
So you saw during the presentation two weeks ago, the, the different projects in the different areas of the city that they are addressing, okay? We have a problem with our water distribution system, okay? We've had a problem for many, many years with an aging West High Street plant that is providing all of the water capacity for the city of London. And that's running at 100 miles an hour each and every day, has been for years. It's a dangerous, dangerous situation that we were facing, okay? And they were facing that, you know, eight, 10 years ago, when they decided to go ahead and erect this other east side water plant. Once again, you know, we're not pointing blame or, you know, doing anything other than recognizing that we've got a problem. I don't know the exact number there, but I would venture it's between 10 and 12 million dollars in the ground that's not producing any water for the city, okay? So when we say we've already paid for it, okay, we have, we have, and we're still paying for it. But do we take that 12 million dollars and throw it away and say, or do we throw another, you know, two million at fixing it and making sure that we've got adequate water supplies for the future for London? So the, the sewer issue, Amherst, is overburdened. It's overburdened. Now, you know, this is a problem that's, you know, been brewing since 2000. It can't accommodate much more. And when we have high periods of rain, or weather events, they call them, we have a lot of infiltration. It's I and I, they call it in the engineering world. It gets in our, our wastewater system, although we don't want it to get in there. It gets in our wastewater system, and it causes lots of problems. And we've all seen the problems that have occurred the last several years. We can't stop weather events, okay? We can't do that. But what we can do is, is button up this, this system, okay? So we know we have a problem there. We have a problem. This is with our existing residents. We have a problem with future development in that area because that can only accommodate another 150 rooftops, okay? So if, if we do nothing at all, we still have to address that. We have to address it. Okay, so the problem is, is that, that is the east side trunk sewer now. That goes right along Candy Boulevard and through the condominiums and over to the Sharp Avenue lift station, okay? It is twice to three times as expensive as the engineer told you last time he was here to go and try to fix that. It, it's, you can't really do that inexpensively. So we have to take it out and, and take it around an area that we don't have that infrastructure in place now, okay? So while we're doing that, we're creating an opportunity to build this for the future, okay? So we don't just put a Band-Aid on that problem or, you know, reroute it and then, then let it go. You know, we build it so that we're not sitting here 10, 15 years from now talking about the same thing, that it's inadequate. So we've got the sewer issue, $14 million. It is what it is, you know? And that's, that is what it costs to fix that. It's unfortunate, but that's what it costs. So we got the water plant that we got to throw a couple more million dollars at, okay? Then what are we doing with our current infrastructure? Back to the water. With our plant running, you know, 80 miles an hour, 100 miles an hour, and just waiting for a failure, you know, everybody keeping the fingers crossed that we didn't have a major breakdown at the water plant and no water in this town. We had two events that occurred last year. We had a integral meeting with the county, the administration, and the BPU, and we hammered out a deal to interconnect with the county water that's on State Route 56, down to where our, our water terminates at the bowling alley, okay? What this does is it provides emergency water, plus it provides pressure that we've had problems with in that area of town to put out fires. The county got a grant, and they are providing that to us at no cost. But what does that mean to us? It means that that main going up 56 or Main Street is brittle. It's old. It's like a lot of our other infrastructure. It can't handle the pressure when the county hooks up to, to the city. So we got to replace that, okay? 3,000 feet. A million three. You know, anytime you do anything in, in utilities, it's millions of dollars. Okay, we can't peel that off. We have the flooding, and we have problems in our downtown area. That's where other dollars are being spent. So Rich, you asked, can you peel any of this back? And we've asked two engineering, two international engineering companies that have helped us put this plan together. This isn't the BPU plan. It's not the administration plan. It's not my plan. This is from engineering companies who deal with billions of dollars worth of infrastructure around the world. They said this is what London needs. So it is what it is. We have probably 50 million plus worth of infrastructure improvements that this city needs. We do. I mean, it, it, no ifs, ands, or buts. If, if anybody can look at the pipes in the ground, what, what little patches we put, little, little Band-Aids over the years. And then once again, no blame, but we've got a problem. We've created a problem for ourselves. So this is the fix that has been recommended to us. So it's hard to swallow, 18.5. It's hard to swallow. And when you start talking about percentage increases, yeah, it sounds overwhelming, absolutely overwhelming. The issue is, is that our base fee for sewer is $1.50. So even if you raise it $1.50, you got a 100% increase, and then all of a sudden it sounds like, whoa. At the end of three years, the, the base increases for, for the average, for the average household will be $20.83. Yeah, it's $20.83, alright? We're not paying now. Is it a drag? It is a drag. It's also a drag when you get your Columbia gas bill or your electric bill, and it's five or six dollars more than what it was last time. What do you do? You pay it because you need it. You pay it. And you don't call the president of Columbia Gas and say, this is a 3,000% increase. You don't do that. You just pay it. It's a utility. We need water. We need sewer as a city, as human beings. We need this, okay? So long-winded answer, but hopefully address some of the concerns. Rich, I, I don't see backing off of anything. Here's also what I can tell you, is that I've been working on this since I was appointed three years ago, three long years. If you approve this and the engineering starts, and it's already started to a certain extent, we won't break ground on the sewer until late next year, 2024. It won't be done for 24 months, 2026. The water will be done, we're hoping by October. But this is how long things take. So peel away, try to make, you know, that $20, $18, $17, and not address what needs to be addressed, I, I think is a disservice. So I understand. Nobody wants increases. I understand fixed incomes. I do understand. But I also understand that every other thing in life has gone up. Your utilities you need, your utilities you need. I don't, I, I never want to debate whether to buy groceries or medicine or what have you, but if, if you put things in perspective, it's $20 a month.
That's just for one, but then you've got your water and your trash.
It's a total, $20, $20.83.
After three years?
After $20, $20.83 are the proposed increases altogether. So that's, that's a lot easier on the ears than 3,000, 12,000, 11,000%, you know, whatever we were coming up with, okay? I know that was long-winded, but we've had a lot of people who've expressed interest. And I concur and I agree, but, you know, once again, this is not my plan. This is not the BPU's plan. This is recommended from two international engineering firms that deal all over the world with multiple billions of dollars in, in expansion and infrastructure improvement and repairs.
I just have one question for you, Mr. Lealonic. Last time this rate increase was presented, what were the numbers in order to get those projects or get, get that started last time?
Oh, because of not having the ability to, to move on it last year. So the, the sewer infrastructure was $9 million. The water was probably still around 2, 2.5. So, yeah, you, you've seen a, a four-plus million dollar increase just in 12 months.
In 12 months? So, so...
Yeah, there's the fear of delaying again.
Right, so that, so, you know, we need these things done, but the longer we delay them, the more expensive. we delay them, the more expensive it's going to cost, but it's not going to stop the issue from being needed to get addressed.
But along those lines, if it's went up by fifty percent since last year, what's it gonna do in two years? And is this even going to be enough to pay that then?
Yeah. Well, Greg, the engineers all think that the cost will continue to escalate. They don't feel that it will be like two thousand twenty-two, because there's a lot of supply chain issues there.
That's why we lock them in.
But we have inflation, and we have, yeah, there's that concern. So, back to, back to the question you raised two weeks ago, why don't we spend some of the carryover in our BPU accounts? And this is exactly why, absolutely why. You know, we can't get through a project and just fall short of the goal line, okay? So, we have to have a little bit of pad there.
Well, I understand that. What I, what I think Mr. Hayes was asking, and I asked this last time along those lines, like, small projects like on Riley, Lincoln, I mean, that was like an eighty thousand, or maybe a hundred and sixty thousand dollar project. You're a financial professional, so I know that if I take a loan, over the course of a twenty- or thirty-year loan, if I take a hundred thousand dollar loan, I'll probably end up paying two hundred thousand dollars in the course of that loan. Generally, once you're paying your interest, that's what it adds up to in the long run.
Yes, sir.
So, if that's the case, if we have projects that run a hundred and sixty thousand, another one for a hundred and thirteen for the treatment plant filter media, which is a hundred and thirteen thousand, if we pay for those things, and we don't take a loan, or we don't take that money at this time and have to pay it back, in the long run, that would shorten the amount that we pay. And I think we'd be good stewards of saying, we can fix these things now. We have this much money. We can do those. Is it, was that along the lines of what you're asking, Rich, or did you have a totally different?
It's kind of along the lines I was asking about, and just wanted to see if there's any way you can kind of scale back a little bit, so we can...
I think we're, it's been brought up multiple times of, in the past, of the Band-Aids that we have put on, and the issues that we're going through is, because we have done smaller projects, and they're trying to connect, we're now finding out the issues of tiles that were, we were trying to cut prices, do things, and now when we're trying to connect another project with an existing project, we're finding other issues and having to redo the work that has already been done. So, I mean, it's a huge number, but sometimes it's better to get everything done at once, get it all laid. That way, you don't have those other projects mending back into an existing project and maybe causing another issue down the road.
Now, Mr. Mayor mentioned a minute ago that this would lock in these prices?
Well, once we would be able to put it out to bid, then they will give us, we would accept somebody's bid. That's what I meant by that.
So, but it won't lock in the prices. We'll have a bid, but if we don't do the work for two years, and they increase cost in two years, we're gonna have to come up with the remainder of the money. So, it went from nine million to thirteen million. That was a fifty percent increase in less than a year. If those rates increased by fifty percent, how do we pay for that in the future?
Yeah. Greg, nobody anticipates that level of increase. You had COVID, you had supply chain, you had inflation at over eight point six or eight percent, whatever that was, okay? So, although all the consensus is that rates will continue to rise, they don't expect it to be that dramatic. Secondly, those bids from the engineers have contingencies, construction contingencies for items that aren't thought of, or for increases, okay? So, there is some level of protection. But at the end of the day, I go back to, you know, our accounts, and why don't we fund, you know, these improvements out of our accounts? Because those are there for emergencies. And I'll just cite one. We had a problem in the water department today that TJ, the superintendent, took care of, but, you know, it could be a ten, twenty, fifty thousand dollar repair. I mean, these things happen all the time, and we have to take care of them. We have, in our wastewater department, we have what we call a vac truck, and this thing is what goes and cleans out, you know, clogs and flushes out systems, et cetera. It's a very, very, very important tool. We've had it refurbished many, many, many times. It should have been traded in and replaced, but a new vac truck is a hundred and some odd thousand dollars, if not more, okay? We can't afford that. But we're on borrowed time every time we send that to a service station to get repaired, you know? Just knowing in the back of our minds, we've got major, major problems. I told you what three thousand feet of water main cost, okay, installed? One point three million. And that's not very far. That's Garfield up to the bowling alley. That's not very far. If we have a major water break that we have to have an emergency repair for, it's expensive, very, very expensive.
And that addressed Mr. Anthony's question a minute ago about the contingency. So, Mr. Anthony, they did provide us with the preliminary opinion of probable cost, and it has contingencies built into this. That's not on the website that you can see it, but they have it, and we have this now also.
So, what you're saying is...
Could you use the microphone, please? Thank you.
So, what I'm hearing is that Steve is saying that this big thirteen point one, fourteen point one sewer project is not going to start until late twenty twenty-five?
Four, four.
Okay. So, with that being said, if the council passes this eighteen point five million dollar project, and what happens when they start in late twenty twenty-four? Two years down the road, they're half done, or two-thirds away done, and the cost of went up another two or three million. Taxpayers are gonna have to pay for that. That's what, that's what irks a lot of taxpayers. They're told one thing, but in the long run, it's not actually true. That's what it would cost today. If the work started tomorrow and ended tomorrow, that's whatever it costs. But since you're delaying it almost two years before you start digging, and in two more years, it's not completed, and the cost overrun is certainly gonna be more than the eighteen point five, or just for the sewer project of fourteen point one. So, even if there's built-in cost overruns or whatever, the taxpayers will still be paying the extra money.
I agree. We'd have to come up with the money somewhere, obviously.
And that's what people are gonna be upset about when that happens.
In this example, while you're there, and Mr. Lealonic's there, with just the preliminary cost of the east side trunk project, there's a thirty percent contingency on this line that says it's two point six million dollars. They've built that into the price upfront. So, that is built in. Now, if it raises by that much, it's built in.
Is that over the term of the project, or is that over so many years?
So, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so it's over the term of the project, but, so, that's what these guys are skilled in. So, they don't tell us, hey, you know, if you wrote us a check tomorrow for eighteen point five million dollars, that's what it would cost. They're the ones who gave us the timeline, right? So, they're taking all those things into consideration, and all those facts into consideration, that, you know, they're the ones who told us it's not gonna start until the end of next year. So, they're taking all that into, into their planning of keeping us of what we actually need. Not today, but what we need a couple years down the line as we're building this.
All right. One other question. It was brought up just recently. The question was, there's gonna be a three percent increase every year starting in twenty twenty-six. Nobody has answered me, how, is this gonna be forever and ever, or is this gonna be so many years at a three percent increase starting in twenty twenty-six?
Indefinitely.
Which means forever.
Sir.
Sir. As a matter of fact, I think that that proposed three percent increase is something that should have been done years ago, because year after year, you're going to have, the costs are going to increase, and you're gonna have to be able to keep up with repairs. You're gonna have to be able to keep up with material costs, things like that. And if you don't have those increases built in, you'll be playing catch-up like we are now.
Mr. President, thank you. You know, unfortunately, in our economy, we have something called inflation. It's the cost of goods and services as they rise every year. There's no reverse inflation. Inflation, and the Federal Reserve has been trying desperately the last twenty-four months to curtail this, but historically, it's three percent. The cost of goods and services goes up three percent every year. And just look historically back ten, twenty, fifty, seventy years ago, doesn't matter, three percent. So, this is, this is a utility. This is a utility, okay? This is not a profit center. It's a utility. It's the cost of goods and services. You know, the city's providing services. The costs go up three percent. That's all there is to it. So, you know, when we don't assess that, when any company doesn't assess that, when Kroger doesn't assess that, they're going backwards. And so, yes, nobody likes to hear indefinitely, but it is. It's, everything is built in with inflation. Every company in the world factors in inflation. Your utilities are the same.
Thank you.
Can I, I just want to, Andy asked a question.
And then Mr. Norman, you're next.
I'm sorry. So, you were asking about comparables, right, and different people's rates? You know, I would ask city council, call some of your friends in Mount Sterling, West Jeff, Columbus, and ask them what they're paying for water and sewer and those things, and trash. So, I asked somebody in Mount Sterling. They sent me a copy of their bill from Mount Sterling, and I wrote it down here, and they are paying a hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-seven cents a month, okay? That does not include trash. This is a family of two, a husband and wife. They pay sixty-six, seventy-four for water, and fifty-one, fifty-three for sewer. A hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-seven cents a month, and they have to pay somebody else to pick their trash up. So, I would just, you know, call somebody in West Jeff, what do you guys pay, you know, on average a month for, you know, you and your husband, or you and your wife, or you and your family, and get those comparables, because I think you guys will see that we are below a lot of people.
Just a moment, sir.
I'm sorry.
You don't have the floor. Thank you. Next is Mr. Norman. She is before you. Okay. If you could use the microphone, please. Thank you.
I think I can speak.
Well, we need the microphone for the recording.
Okay. My, things popped into my head in here, and I'm looking outside of the box, and a couple of statements I want to make is, with all due respect to you, sir, and what you do in your job, twenty dollars can make a lot of difference to different individuals. And I know that by what you're proposing, it's going to be taking my water bill, my sewer bill, and my trash collection up to a hundred dollars a month. And again, you can tell by my gray hair, I'm a retiree, okay? Can I afford a hundred dollars a month? And my gas and my electric are different because I have signed up with a company that has reduced my CCF, so I don't have to pay as much. And I thank God for that. But I don't have any control over what you do, other than coming to this meeting to talk about what you're gonna do about my water bill. Now, by outside of the box, have you thought about either slowing down the permits that you allow for housings, houses to be built, or apartments to be built, or for a period of time, or stopping it altogether until we get this problem fixed? You talked about Amherst. I know exactly where Amherst is. My son had a house built out in that same area. Is he gonna run into the same problems years from now? But think, you've got to think outside the box. You can't think about what's been done, or this is the right way to do it. You've got to use your heads and think outside the box of other ways to take care of things. Like I said, limit the number of permits that you give for building houses or apartments. And I got it from a good source, the permit that was given to the gentleman to build fifty apartments at the corner of Kenny and Lafayette Street, or it's in that same area. But he's actually gonna build fifty-six. Now, that's six more units. That's twelve, possibly twelve more people, or a family of four, that's gonna add a lot more. That's gonna add to how much water's being used, how much water's going into the sewers, and how much trash is gonna be picked up. So, think outside the box. Open that box up.
And ma'am, I just wanted to make one comment to that, is the more houses that we have, the more dollars we actually have paying into fixing our infrastructure. So, we actually want more houses. The more, if you, just, okay, but, but we're trying to fix the problems. And so, in experiments, if you want to increase your numbers, the biggest thing you can do to change an experiment is to increase your numbers. You increase your numbers, you have more income coming in to fix. So, then you have that amount over more people. So, then you can actually get the current failing infrastructure fixed even quicker if you have more people contributing to that. So, right now, we have ten thousand some people, you know, contributing to that. Say if we had twenty thousand, how fast could we get our infrastructure fixed then at that rate?
I understand what you're saying. How, I can say stop it altogether. That's one thing to think about. Can't you just slow it down until we do get it fixed? And then you can start adding, giving more permits to get this done.
Yeah, I would say the faster we go with growth, the quicker we should be able to get that.
Let's flip that coin.
I understand what you're saying.
You add other people in here, but like I had said in my comments, is that with the prices going up, and I do understand they have to go up, we have to keep up, you're gonna be losing businesses, you're gonna be losing restaurants that use water. All these other businesses are gonna go out of town, and you're not gonna be getting any money from them.
Where are they gonna go?
Yeah, and I would hope that we would get...
They're gonna go out, down to Caddo County. They're gonna go to Columbus.
Wow. I mean, we're cheaper here. Columbus is more expensive. Why would they?
But we're gonna be right up there with them. I know how much they pay for their expenses, for their water and sewer in Columbus. And I know what they pay in Van Gogh City, because my best friend lives there, and she showed me her water bill. And she said, yeah, you're lucky over there, but, you know, that's a big city. Yes. There's much more population.
Yeah, taxes are more there.
And also, if we improve our infrastructure, I think that's gonna be more attractive for businesses to come to our city, knowing that they can be confident, confident with the infrastructures that are being fixed. Mr. Norman, please. It's your turn. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, I'm not really sure. I got questions. So, I mean, I wrote them down because I'm not, my memory's not as good as it used to be. One of the things that doesn't sit well with me is, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, it is that carryover. The carryover out of the two accounts that'll mainly be used to pay for this debt service, you're carrying over eighty to ninety percent in some of those years. I get that. You want that for the rainy day, but that BPU is basically carryover money, correct? It's, you didn't use it last year, you're carrying it over. Is that correct?
Those are fund balances, Mike, that either were not allocated, or were not used, or they'll be pledged for the following year.
Right. So, if, so, in a year where there's eighty percent left in an account, that eighty percent gets transferred over to the next year, which means you're starting the year only needing twenty percent worth of money to pay that debt for that year. Is that correct? Theoretically, if everything goes well, and there is no emergencies.
Yeah, right, right. Okay.
Okay. So, it's kind of like a farmer, okay? I'm a farmer. I've got a silo. I've got grain left over from last year. It's setting in my silo, right? Something happens. There's a grain shortage. The way I'm seeing the BPU is they're keeping their grain in the silo, and they're coming straight to me, Mike Norman, and saying, we want your grain to pay for this project that we're doing, without taking any of our grain out of the silo. Does that make sense to you?
It does make sense to me, because you always want to have a cushion. You can do that if you want, and then you'll have no grain, and then no one will have any grain at all, if you give all your grain away.
So, but you think it's okay for that farmer to hog his grain, and all the rest of us to put ours in?
But I think if that...
To compensate for his, oh, I'm not done. No, it's the beginning. So, you're saying it's okay for them to keep that there, not use it for any of this infrastructure project that they want to do, and put that... and put that all on us? That we get into our savings if we have to, or we, our, our lives become more constricted because you don't wanna use any of that money, because something might happen and you might need that money? Well, this is something that happened. We've got an East High Street plant that hasn't worked since day one. If that's not an emergency, if that's not a reason to pull the money out of the silo, tell me what is?
All right. I think that, uh, yeah, the water tower doesn't work, the water plant does not work, and that's where we're at now. We've been asked, what can you do to fix that? We have to fix it, it can't just sit there.
Yep.
This is what we're proposing now to fix it, and this is what it looks like. So we can either sit here in ten years and five years and say, "We still have a water plant that doesn't work," or we can take a look at what it looks like to fix it and go ahead and get it fixed.
So you're saying what it looks like to fix it is, the only option we have is to put all of that debt, not on the BPU, but on me as a end user, which they like to call us. Because as Mr. LaLanka has said several times, we've, what has it been, two thousand seventeen since we've had a rate increase? Is that correct?
Uh, if my memory serves me.
Okay, well, you're wrong.
Okay.
It's, uh, two thousand, two thousand eighteen, my bill went up by three dollars a month.
That's how long it was. That's, uh-
Is it a BPU bill?
Nope, nope, stormwater.
Okay, but who charged, who do I pay that money to?
Collect it for us and give it to the, to that fund that's under BPU.
Okay, so, stormwater has nothing to do with this. So even though it's an increase on my bill, it doesn't count.
They collect it for us. And that, that's not part of the order of the bill. They collect it so you can put it as a right fund in the bill.
So the three dollar increase is not BPU, that is stormwater, and BPU collects it and puts that into the correct account that it needs to go into. And I'm just saying that because I can't hear you off the mic.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Thank you.
So, as, but as a BPU end user, that is an increase, right, over the years? I, no matter if, take it for them or not, when it comes down to it, in my pocketbook-
But it's not an increase from BPU.
Okay. All right, well, we'll move on then, okay? Uh, da-da-da. It's actually increased to six fifty, if you wanted to know. Um, we were told that these increases will happen over the next three years, it's actually eighteen months. Um, why aren't these in two different, uh, legislations? Why don't we have one legislation for the debt payment? And then one legislation for the three percent increase, which will actually go to operations? Because we've been told that our entire increase is going to the debt service. So shouldn't these be two different pieces of legislation? One that says, "Here's the increase that's going just to debt service, and then here's three percent after that that we're going to use for operation?" Is that something that should be done?
Yeah, that, that's interesting, because, what's that little town, um, towards Circleville?
Asheville.
Asheville.
Right, I'm, I was gonna bring that up next.
The Asheville bill actually shows on their water bill, it shows, "This is your sewer rate, this is your debt service rate", which to me indicates that once the debt's paid, that can be reduced.
And you are correct. I called Asheville, and I asked them about that. Asheville's bill, what they do is they'd show you on your bill that there is a debt service. So I called them, and I said, "So, once that debt service is paid, do the customers still continue to pay that debt service?" The answer was no. And yet, we will. We will continue to pay that debt service. As you said, what was it? Indefinitely. So that's forever. Um, the other thing I'd like to ask is, the other thing I'd like to ask is, um, the payment for this, eighteen million, it was asked last time, what is the annual payment projected to be? Mr. LaLani?
Approximately eighty thousand dollars a month.
Which is, uh, one million twenty thousand a year?
Go ahead.
So, in what interest rate are you expecting that to come in at?
The water is projected to be three percent. The, uh, wastewater is projected to be four percent. But that still will not be applicable until we actually apply for the EPA.
Right, so if you look at those percentages for eighteen million dollars, I mean, I looked at them, and what I came up with, and maybe my numbers are wrong, and you can correct me, but I'm showing that if we do, if we want to make that million dollar a year annual payment, the interest rate has to be three point five percent or less, and that's for a thirty-year loan. But I'm pretty sure you told us it would be twenty years?
Thirty years.
Okay, so it will be thirty years? So we have to come in at three point, three point five percent to get it down to that one million? If that doesn't happen, where do you propose to get the rest of that money, other than come back to us again and say, "Oh, we need more money"?
So back to your, your, uh, farming analogy with the grain in the silos, that's particularly why we want to protect those dollars. With the development of new housing, there are tap fees. And whether we slow housing down or have no housing at all, I, you know, i- i- if the town doesn't grow, it's a death sentence. A, a town cannot continue to survive without growth. So you, the, the, the correct answer to how a town survives is, is regulated growth, all right? Keep up with your infrastructure, don't let the floodgates open all at one time, and, uh, you know, do it orderly. So with that type of development and growth that is anticipated over the next twenty years, that's where those dollars will come from.
So your answer is, part of it will come from the silo, part of it will come from future tap fees and future services?
If we run into a, if we run into a problem. I'm not anticipating that, Mike. What, what the engineers have done, what I've done, is looked at historical rates, and I projected them high. Four percent for the largest debt service and, uh, three percent for the water. Okay, so, and I err on the side of caution.
Okay. And then another question is, the, the trunk extension. How much of that trunk extension depends on us getting the East High Street, uh, plant up and going? Can that trunk extension be done if it fails? Because you've told us before, "We've got the fix, we've got the fix," and it's, you know, we're still, we don't. So now you're telling us that about the beginning of next year, that's gonna be fixed, it's gonna be up and running. But if it's not, does that kibosh the, the trunk extension?
The, the, the water plant is supposed to be fixed by October.
Of this year?
This year.
Okay, because your-
This year.
Your guy told us, "We'd be lucky if it happened at the beginning of next year." And that's your engineers?
We had a conference this, earlier this week, we mandated that that happened this year. It will happen this year, unless there are extraordinary circumstances beyond anybody's control, okay? That is first and foremost, number one concern with administration, with council, get that water plant fixed.
Okay, but again, the question that I asked you is, is that trunk, if we build that trunk and that part of it doesn't work, that station doesn't work, like it hasn't for the last eight years, does that make that trunk pretty much useless?
Oh, I, no, they're two separate things.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
But that water plant will be fixed.
Okay, we're not, we're not dealing in ifs and buts.
Are we, are we talking about sewer and water?
You're, you're, you're asking about ifs and buts.
That's why, that's why I'm asking. So the water plant, and you've got that trunk line coming down through, if the water plant isn't working, it doesn't have any effect with that trunk line?
It does not.
Okay, so then, going back to, why can't we take the two point five million or two million to fix the water plant, have its own loan by itself, and fix that first? Let me know that you can finish a project, because at this point, as a citizen, that thing's been sitting out there eight years, at least eight years, and you haven't completed it, but you're coming to me and everybody else, and you're saying, "Okay, we didn't complete this one. We're not gonna be able to complete it till," now you're saying, "October. How about you take care of that first? We see you fix it, and then you come back to us and say, 'Now, we wanna go to the big boy and get the big boy things done.'"
Well, uh, thank you. Mr. Norman.
One, one more, I, I know we're gonna move on to the other two things, but just because Mr. Anthony asked five specific questions, I think we've answered a few of them already. Um, is the eighteen point five million based on just a guesstimate by the BPU? I think we've answered, that's not true, all right? And then, the taxpayers, are they gonna pay the full eighteen point five million, or will there be federal money, dot, federal dollars? We don't know that yet, although they're applying. Um, he, you answered the question about the three percent that that'll be indefinitely or forever. Uh, the question I don't think I got answered yet, where do the tap fees go? So, so when we build these lines and people tap in, does that go in to pay for this? Or does it go into a separate part of the fund?
Okay, so as I stated, Greg, we, we have fifty million plus in repairs that have to be made to our infrastructure, okay? We, we've got one hundred-year-old pipes in the ground. Wait, wait, we, we have a mandated lead study that has to be concluded by, uh, fall of next year. And a repair by the summer of twenty-five, that's gonna cost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I mean, these things never stop, absolutely never stop, okay? So those fees, those tap fees, will go into further infrastructure improvement. I mean, that's the sole purpose of tap fees, is to add and improve.
But it won't be paying this low. The tap fees won't specifically-
You know, you know, and, and, and back to, uh, Asheville or what have you. You know, i- if, if the city is, is fortunate enough to have sustained growth, r- r- reasonable growth, planned growth, and, and, um, you know, I, I see that happening. I absolutely see that happening over the next twenty years. Then there should be extra money in the coffers at that point in time to repair our infrastructure and maybe hammer down on debt service. I, I doubt that I'll be part of the BPU when that happens, okay? But I would anticipate they'd be good stewards of the, the money. Once again, it's not a profit center, it's not, nobody gets paid out of that at all. There's no shareholders, there's no CEO. So I would suggest that they, they retire the debt as soon as possible, and perhaps even reduce the, um, the monthly amount necessary for the, the products to be delivered, okay, and the services to be delivered.
All right. Mr. Anthony, did that help answer your questions?
One last question hasn't been addressed or answered.
Yes.
At the last meeting, I was aware that there are two current, uh, wells at the East Water Treatment Plant, all right? In the past, city council has approved funds to find a better water source, and so they drilled, uh, just past the intersection of Spring Valley Road and one forty-two. Now the BPU is proposing that a new production well will be drilled.
I think it did too.
Estimated cost, one point two million. Where is this proposed production well, where it's gonna be drilled? And do we need it since we already have two wells?
Okay, thank you, yes, valid question.
I think the mic is out. Steve, Mr. LaLanka, the, yeah. I think it only lasts for two hours and it's done.
Two and a half on good night.
It's a two-hour, it's a two, two and a half hour battery, it is not an energizer, so.
Okay, hey, thank you, uh, va- valid question. So, and, and, and I'll make this very brief. We, we had contaminated wells that we were unable to get EPA, state or federal, to help us with, uh, come up with a resolution. So we thought, okay, well, let's, let's drill and let's punch a couple more holes and see if we can find clean water elsewhere. So that meant going outside of the city limits to, uh, individual landowners that said, "Yeah, you can test our water," okay? Well, guess what happened? I, we, we found the same contamination, same contamination, okay? And so the question is, you keep on going, you know, way outside of the city limits, and then you've got millions and millions of dollars to pipe it back in if we find clean water. So during this period of time, last fall, Burgess and Lipo engineers were able to come up with a way to eradicate the ammonia in the water, okay? They also discovered, we had a, a test well that was drilled at our water site in two thousand and eighteen. So we couldn't find any records in two thousand and eighteen. It might've been the, the, the BPU board at that point in time, or, uh, the, the superintendent at the water department maybe hired somebody to, to dig a little bit deeper, see if they could find clean water. They did not, it had contamination in it, okay? Guess what? Pneumonia. Uh, ammonia, not pneumonia. I'm about ready to get pneumonia. But anyway, the, the, um, so they did a test, it had ammonia in it, and they abandoned it. So when our engineers discovered that, they said, "Well, let's test it ourselves." Well, guess what? That's a deeper well, a much deeper well, and it has less than one-half of the percent of contamination that the other two wells have. So we found a cleaner water source and a different aquifer, and it, we could only use one well at a time for, uh, for EPA standards, right? We have two wells over there, but only one, if we, when we get it operating, only one well at a time. We developed the other well, we blend the contaminated waters, we have solved half of our problem, and the amount of chemicals needed to treat that goes down dramatically. So if we just stick with the wells that we have, we're going to have an additional one hundred thousand dollars a year in chemical costs, plus inflationary. That will go down to a third if we can blend the two water sources. So hence, okay, we spend the one point three now, yeah, it hurts a little bit, but we have extra water reserves, and we've knocked our chemical costs to a third. So over a period of years, it will be the wisest move possible, okay? So, does that help answer the question with the wells?
So, we're gonna still, we aren't drilling the third well. For years later on, you're just, you're two wells that are presently there.
No, we will drill the third well. We're gonna, what they call is develop it. So we got a hole in the ground, but that's, you can't use that for a water source, you have to develop it. You gotta put twelve, sixteen-inch casing down there, you gotta put pumps and clarifiers and everything else in there, plus you got to, to build a, a housing over, that's what makes it so expensive.
So now we add the water to the site?
Yes, yes.
And then I had a question, just for clarification. Uh, with the three percent, that is gonna continue, because that is just three percent uh, that we need in order to keep up with our failing infrastructure, correct? That's not to continue to pay debt service?
No, 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 the three percent is just inflationary.
Right, okay. So the payment for, for the debt service is not forever, it's just to continue to take care of our infrastructure, like we have not done in the past?
We're not adequately.
Correct.
On, on inability to do it adequately.
Correct, all right, thank you. All right. Thank you for, uh, all of your comments on one fifteen twenty-three. Now we are moving on to one sixteen twenty-three, motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Ordinance one sixteen twenty-three, sponsored by Rich Hayes and Henry Comer. An ordinance amending section one zero four two of the codified ordinances. And this establishes the charges and fees for water services within the city, which we have discussed. Do we have any other questions on those? Okay? And on to resolution one sixteen, or one seventeen twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Resolution one seventeen twenty-three, sponsored by Rich Hayes and Henry Comer. A resolution amending the current trash rates. So one seventeen is amending our trash rates. Uh, do we have any discussion on the trash rate increase proposed?
I, I, I do wanna bring one thing up. I didn't wanna, I mean, it kinda goes for all of this. So as Mr. La- La- it's a statement, as Mr. LaLanka and Mayor Klosser have challenged people to contact our other utilities such as Columbia Gas and, and Ohio Edison to discuss rate hikes, I'd like to point out that Ohio Edison and Columbia Gas must get approval from the Public Utilities Commissions of Ohio, and they must justify the rate request when they do that. Columbia Gas, and I shared a, a couple stories with you guys earlier that you can read. Columbia Gas recently asked for over a hundred percent, uh, rate increase- Columbia Gas recently asked for over a hundred percent, uh, rate increase on their base rate from thirty-seven to eighty dollars. They went to the PUCO, they were questioned, they had to justify, and the PUCO said, we're not gonna do that. However, they did approve fifty percent to be paid, or fifty percent increase over five years, um, which was eighteen eighty total, a month of an increase over that time period. So, it went from thirty-seven almost to fifty-seven. We are being asked to approve five ninety-nine a month, or seventeen ninety-seven in eighteen months. This council will actually act, if you ask me, as the part of the PUCO. I would think that it would be a P, our Board of Public Utilities thing, that they should do that, but they have to come to us to set the rates. So, when we're discussing all of these things, the rates that we set are gonna determine the scope of work to be done, whether they like it or not. If, for some reason, we don't offer, or we don't approve those rates, that's gonna have to be scaled back on their part. You know, that, that, it's just how that's gonna be. But I just wanted to bring that up today for, for everyone to think about, that our role in this is, we set the rates. No matter what they're asking for, we have to set the rates, and, uh, we should consider that moving forward.
All right. And I think that those rates are, uh, like Mr. Lalani said, those rates have been set as a result of meetings over three years. Uh, lots of discussion, we've had two engineers involved, lots of discussion. So, these aren't just numbers that are pulled out of the air, these are numbers that have been thoroughly researched. And, uh, as he exclaimed earlier, if we scale this back, I think it would be, I think it would be an injustice to the city, because we're not going to address the issues that need to be addressed. We're not going to address the flooding, we're not going to address the basements, we're not gonna address the sump pumps, we're not going to fully address the water plant that doesn't work. And we'll be sitting here ten years from now, uh, listening to everyone saying, why don't we have one drop of water coming out of our water if we don't address these things now? So, uh, you know, I want you also, council, to please keep that in mind, uh, as this is presented, this is a result of three years and, uh, two international, uh, engineers, Mr. Lalani?
Yes.
So, that, I think it's been thoroughly researched, so, thank everyone. Have anything else? All right. One, two, let's see here, or is it one eighteen?
One eighteen. Thank you.
Is it an ordinance or resol, because we had to write that in? All right, resolution?
I'm sorry.
Ordinance? Let me see here, it's in a bag.
It's right here.
Yeah, I say I got a piece of paper here, because it was eleven minutes.
It's a resolution.
The one I gave you.
Resolution right here.
Just wanna make sure. Okay, thank you. Resolution one eighteen twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So, move.
Second.
All right. Resolution one eighteen twenty-three, sponsored by John Stahl, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the Planning Commission for a pre- preliminary development plan.
This is for the Kenny apartments out that way, and we have a public hearing on, uh, March second for that.
Okay, so, that's scheduled for, uh, public hearing on March second.
Do we remember, the original plan was, that was discussed at one point during the Planning Commission, wasn't that sixty-six units?
It wanted to go up to sixty-six, and we scaled it back to fifty-five.
Okay.
They wanted sixty.
Oh, they wanted sixty?
Yeah, there was twenty-four and thirty-six.
Forty-two bedroom and twenty-one bedroom.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it was sixty-six, and then they scaled...
Sixty.
And then they scaled that back...
To fifty-five.
To fifty-five. It was sixty-one.
Forty-two and twenty-one is sixty-three.
Gotcha.
Okay, so, all of those adjustments were, uh, made, and they were approved.
They were made in the planning.
Okay, so, there was, okay, gotcha.
And instead of two drive entrances, there'll be one.
Right, because they were, uh, concerned about the exit from across the street, they didn't want those to run in to get, in together, uh, to possibly create accidents in the future, so they went down to one drive, and then they decreased the amount of houses. Okay. All right, well, let's see here, and we do not have any new business, so, it wants a roundtable.
Not for that.
We'll begin with, uh, Mr. Stahl.
Uh, thanks, everyone, for their comments. It's very interesting to hear the different pros, cons, and everything. Anything about, the more you put something off, the more it costs. And, uh, I know, Mr., they talked about gas rates. I paid budget amount over two years, and mine's up over thirty dollars a month, and they just increased it again, and I don't know how much it's gonna be.
Twenty-two dollars.
Huh?
Twenty-two dollars.
Twenty-two dollars more, so, I'll be up fifty-two dollars a month over what it, what's three years ago there. But you gotta take care of it. It's been put off, we need to proceed ahead. And, uh, Honda's building that plant down at Jeffersonville, and we may get a lot of housing off of that. I mean, all these trucks are gonna be coming through London, hopefully. Grove City thinks they're gonna get all of it. As the mayor there was talking the other day, they hope to get a lot of interest and stuff off of that and side things, but it'd be nice to see some stuff here in London instead. But I appreciate everyone's opinion, but the more you put it off, the more it's gonna cost us. We put it off too long now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hit.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone who's here, showing an interest in the city. Um, some things are not easy to hear, uh, coming from both sides, but, uh, it's good to have input, to hear different people's viewpoints. Um, as far as resources in the community, I don't know if you've checked out bridges, they have a PIP program to help with percentage of income for, um, utility payments, they have HEAP, Home Energy Assistance Program. Some of the pharmaceutical companies offer patient assistance for medications based on income. Um, a lot of doctor's offices have samples that they could possibly, you know, give out. Uh, Department of Jobs and Family Services has various resources, too. And I'm not trying to make light of anyone's situation, but those are some resources that might be available. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, uh, a lot of good points made. It's a big decision, uh, there's a lot of money involved, um, we'll see what happens. Um, I wanna thank all city employees for jobs well done. Just, uh, ask the Lord to bless this town, bless our inhabitants that live here, watch over us, and keep us safe and well. Uh, safety meeting will be January thirteenth, five o'clock, in the, uh, conference room. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson.
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, Mr. Peters?
Uh, just reminder, uh, finance meeting, Monday, February sixth, six P.M.
All right, thank you. Mr. Eads?
Donna Martin, Sherry Charet, or Sherret?
Sherret.
Sherret. Carol Ames, Raymond Anthony, you were all new speakers tonight. I really appreciate you coming in. I think you have some valid points that we have to consider, one way or the other. I do appreciate you coming in, and, um, a couple, I'd like to talk to a few of you just about some things we discussed tonight. Um, also, uh, Mr. President, I think it would behoove everyone here, if we could get the copies of the ordinances online, so we can see those. And we used to be able to click on those and look at those, and I think people in the audience would like to be able to read the actual language of the ordinances. I think we need to work on that in the future, hopefully we can get those on. Um, I also want to congratulate and wish, best wishes to Sergeant Linda Sullivan. She just retired from London Police Department. Um, I know that there's been a few other things. Uh, for those of you that might know, I was the dispatcher at the police department for eleven years. She was the last person still in the department when I was up there, and that was over twenty-five years ago, so...
You're a man.
About twenty-five years ago. So, yeah, so, she's there. And then, uh, to the council members here, I shared that information about just, uh, discussion points about a sidewalk program. Um, I don't, I know we've got a lot going on. I know Rich asked for another copy of that today. I just hope that we can consider that moving forward also. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, too. And I do thank everyone for, uh, bringing their comments, uh, whether they're for or against, uh, these issues. We can't make these decisions without you, so I really appreciate you being here, represent you, uh, representing some of your friends who can't be here. Really appreciate hearing from everyone, because we cannot make these decisions without you. This is an eighteen million dollar project, and is definitely, uh, not something that we should just sit in a room and decide, we have to hear from you. Uh, and I know that these meetings are taking, uh, a little time, but I, I think that these items are worth discussion, uh, because it's going to directly affect our city, and I